I now call the regularly scheduled meeting for the Nitrone County Board of County Commissioners for Tuesday, July 5th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Mill.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Lason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Bertollio.
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. It's good to see some faces here on such a nice night. The Chair entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the item E, contract for professional services with the city of Casper for FY23 transit services removed.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I think perhaps just to amend the agenda would be appropriate.
Okay.
In addition to removing subpart E, contract for professional services from the consent agenda, that has still is still in negotiation with the city. Also, removing from public hearings Resolution 21-22 fiscal year 2022-23 budget. After conferring with Clerk Good, the paper did not publish the legally required notice, and so will be unable to move forward with that public hearing tonight. So we will be looking to republish it and setting it for a new public hearing consistent with state statute. But I would recommend that the commission approve an amended agenda with the deletion of public hearing A and consent agenda item E.
Okay. Chair entertain a motion as so?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nick Lason.
I would move to amend the and approve the agenda as referenced by our county attorney.
Chair second.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nick Lason, seconded by Commissioner North, to amend the tonight's agenda by removing item E off the consent agenda and Resolution 21-21, item A off of public hearings. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. At this point, the Chair would ask call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Move by Commissioner Henry, seconded by Commissioner North to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion on any item? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to contracts, agreements, and resolutions. First item is Resolution 23-22 approving 307 Horse Racing, Inc. to conduct paramutual wagering on live horse racing, historic horse racing, and simulcast events within Nitrone County, Wyoming. And I don't have the exact address, but I know it's the Kagan Cork Building. Is that correct? And with that, if we could have the applicant, Mr. Ridgeway?
Thank you, Commissioners.
It's not going to move.
It does move.
Kyle Ridgway, Chief Operating Officer of Works, also known as 307 First. One of our subsidiary companies is 307 Horse Racing, which is who I'm here representing tonight. As Chairman Bertollio talked about, this is a resolution allowing paramutual wagering to occur at the Kagan Cork, which is 5371 Blackmore Road. The I'll give a I know I was in front of you in December and January and maybe even February related to our first location here in Casper, the Derby Club, at 739 North Center, which we've had open for a number of months. I don't know how many of you have been to the facility, but it's a beautiful facility. We've been very happy with the performance of that facility, the tax revenue that that's generated, the jobs that we've created, and the environment as far as an entertainment space goes. The restaurant at that location's gotten rave reviews in terms of its unique menu and unique offering, which frankly, in this inflationary environment, I look at those financials and I can tell you, running a restaurant's a tough business to be in. But that's the benefit that you get from having the multiple uses in the facility, including the bar, and the gaming, and the simulcast, and then the event space that we have in the back, where we've had wedding receptions, and nonprofit events, and other things like that. And so this facility at Kagan Cork, we envision to be very similar in terms of size, in terms of scope, in terms of offering. The way that this came about was we currently have an asset purchase agreement to acquire the operating business known as Kagan Cork from the Galloway Brothers, Matt and Mark. Matt's here today to talk to you about that. And then we have a real estate purchase agreement to acquire the real estate, all of which is contingent on our ability to offer paramutual wagering at the location. As you know or may remember from our history in front of the county, we have a liquor license that was originally located at the Commissary Mall, which we elected after due diligence to tear down, and we've subsequently sold to Pathfinder Federal Credit Union, who's going to develop that property over the next few years. And so we have to have a use for that liquor license at some point in time. And part of our agreement is that our liquor license would be moved to Kagan Cork, and then the Galloways, as I understand it, have an agreement to sell theirs to somebody who can immediately put it into use. And so this transaction does a number of things. One, it meets our 307 First mission. I'm not going to speak to the situation at Kagan Cork. I'll let Mr. Galloway discuss that, but you have partners who want to retire. You have an inflationary environment that puts financial pressure on a facility that everybody knows and loves. And wouldn't it be great if we continued to have the ownership stay the same, be locally owned, and we operate that as a facility for the community? We've reached an agreement with Matt Galloway to continue to work with our organization and manage the facility, and continue to retain all the employees at that location, just like we did at the Derby Club here. And instead, when they work for our organization, when they're full-time employees, they get fully benefited positions. So we offer health insurance, 401K, and other fringe benefits, which you typically can't get at a bar and restaurant, and the tips are better. So the so we're here in front of you to receive permission to then go to the Gaming Commission. The liquor license concept obviously has to go through the city council, which we're on the docket for in a couple of weeks. This is the same thing we had last time, where we're trying to run all of these processes simultaneously, and it's like, which one do you do first? So we're working with the city council at the same time, but obviously, the county approval is required for the gaming. And the gaming is what makes the business economically viable in terms of continuing to pay the employees, offer the same food offerings at reasonable prices, use it as an entertainment venue. So what I have is I have a layout of the facility that I can hand out to you, and I don't know what the most I don't know if you want me to just walk up and hand them to you or give them to. So I had some problems with the PDF on this. Normally, we would present something that actually shows where the terminals, like how we've laid the terminals out like we did last time. This is a drawing of the original Kagan Corks. What you'll see is the layout on these is tables, which is how the tables are laid out currently at the facility. So what's highlighted in yellow is the upper area of the restaurant when you first walk in, and there's a there's a vestibule that you walk in, and then there's a breezeway area where you can go down the stairs into the restaurant. Those two areas are where we would be locating games. And what we haven't determined is what the exact terminal count's going to be, but it's going to be somewhere between 50 and 70, which is very similar to the Derby Club facility that we have now. And so when I give you the economics in terms of tax revenue, they should be very close in terms of how that facility on North Center's performed, as to how this facility would perform, because we're trying to basically replicate that model. We know how to staff that. We know what the expectations are for the wagering activity. We know that the economics work. And so what we'd be talking about is something like 50 to 70 terminals, which would generate in terms of the 1% tax on the handle, something like $400,000 in a base case that would be split between the county and the city on an annual basis. So between our two facilities, we could do close to a half a million dollars a year just for the county, for the two Casper facilities that we would have if this was approved. The other thing that I would mention is, I talked a little bit about, this is a business purchase and a real estate transaction, and we've got liquor license things where we're solving a problem for the city with this transaction, because as a result of what we've put together, there will no longer be any parked retail liquor licenses in the city of Casper. They will all be in use, which is a good thing. And that was what we promised the city we would do when we acquired Travis Taylor's license, was we would work with local partners to make sure that we found a way to put all the liquor licenses in use. The other benefit of this is, again, we are a live horse racing business, and we just finished our six weeks of races up in Campbell County. As a result of the revenues generated from our Casper facility and our Sheridan facility and our Gillette facility, we were able to increase our purses by $150,000 this year as compared to last year. We had another 1,000-plus horses up in Campbell County that ran. We had great attendance. It was a great benefit for Campbell County, and these facilities are going to continue to do that. In addition, I've talked with Wyoming All Breeds Racing Association and George Spiva, who's the president, about the projections for what our facilities are going to generate for horse breeding subsidies in the state of Wyoming. And I think between all the gaming entities, we should break $5 million this year that will be spread across the state for live race horse breeding in the state of Wyoming, which is huge compared to 10 years ago when it was nothing. So this is an industry that's growing. We've tried to pick our spots in terms of what we said we would do, which is increase our purses at our live racing events from the revenue from these facilities, operate them in a community-friendly way, hire and pay people appropriately, and have an elevated product with a restaurant, other entertainment uses. We still have the outdoor space at the Kagan Cork, just like we would at the Derby Club down here, and so we can still have bands and other events at the facility. The only difference between this facility and the Derby Club on Center is that this facility is already a 21 and over facility, because there's a retail liquor license and they've operated it that way historically. The Derby Club on Center is not 21 and over for the entire facility. On the restaurant side, families can still come in and eat because it's segregated by walls from the gaming area. As you can see on the layout here, that's a little more difficult to pull off in this facility. And so because it's 21 and over, we would continue to operate it that way after we acquired it. So I think that's everything in terms of our pitch and the background information that I have, and what I know you guys have kind of been interested in before, but I'm happy to answer questions or provide more information or whatever I can do.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Excuse me. Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill.
Yes, thank you for coming tonight and going over this with us. You know, we're seeing a lot of this, and I'm just kind of curious where we're at in the county as far as saturation level.
Well, we have found so the issue that we face is, we've come to the county for an approval of each facility that we have. And the difference between us and our competitors is however many number of years ago, they got blanket resolutions that don't require them to go back and to come back in front of you ever. And so this would be our second facility. In terms of the addition of our first facility, that hasn't caused a market saturation in terms of the numbers that we've seen. We actually haven't pulled a lot of traffic from our competitors. We've mostly found that we have new players or new folks that want to come and try it for the first time, because our facility is very different from the offerings of our competitors in terms of having a restaurant in there. There's a different crowd that feels comfortable in that facility versus some of the other facilities that exist. And so our product's materially different, which we think prevents market saturation. I think to the extent we ever wanted to do anything in Casper, there's potential for one more for us that would be a really unique offering in terms of a real multi-use entertainment facility, but that's not finalized, and I'd flip a coin whether that one goes down or not. And so from our perspective, we would want a max of probably three in the county here, max. Otherwise, we feel comfortable with two in terms of the geographic diversity that we have with Center Street and then the unique location of where Kagan Cork is, because the restaurant will actually, we think, do pretty well in terms of having it not be such a large part of the revenue. You can run it a little bit tighter and have more profit, because there's a sort of a captive audience out there in terms of how many places you can eat for all the people that work way out east, and for people that come over from Glen Rock or Douglas to play or whatever. That's an easier access point for them than some of the other facilities here in town. So we may have a draw from Glen Rock or other parts of the state to that particular facility, but we haven't seen any saturation in terms of the numbers, given the first one that we opened. It hasn't really affected the tax revenue that you've seen or caused any saturation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a point of clarification, we went ahead and rescinded all of those in perpetuity where they can go in. So each from whenever somewhere around when you made your application, every new one has to come in. And we're working on rules that say you can't simply just sell it, transfer it, move it, whatever. It literally has to come back through. Okay? Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the issue? Good evening, Mr. Galloway.
Good evening. I am not as good a speaker as Mr. Ridgeway, so bear with me. I get very nervous in these types of environments. Commissioners, my name is Matthew Galloway.
Your address?
My address? Okay. 71 Magnolia, number two.
All right.
Paradise Valley. My brother and I are current owners of the Kagan Cork. I'll be honest, I had kind of a little list of some points I wanted to hit, but Kyle really did a very good job of hitting almost all of those. This wasn't just the easiest decision we've ever made. I want to be very clear about that, because this is a business we built ourselves. But an opportunity had come that we found, I guess you'd say, and we felt like it was a good fit. My brother and the other owners are headed towards retirement. I'm not. The beauty is that I'm a part of the deal is I'm staying with the building, and that really went well with my employees. I'll tell you what went even better with my employees is benefits. I've been in the business for 25 years, and it is a very, very rare occasion that you can offer benefits to these individuals. And you talk about life-changing for a bunch of single women, and well, single men for that matter too, I shouldn't just individuals, but and then our cooking staff that really, you know, it's tough to pay them what they're truly worth, especially in the industry where our food costs are exceeding 75% currently, because people just won't pay $25 for a cheeseburger. So there's some problems in that that this is going to help solve as well. I'll tell you, after speaking with the neighbors and our loyal customers, of course, they had a little bit of trepidation in the beginning, but there's a great deal of excitement, especially because we're going to maintain the integrity of our menu, of our tap beers, of our drinks, of the lower area, the outdoor patio area, some of our events that we offer, and then most importantly, our staff, because a lot of our staff members have been very blessed. I'll be honest, I have four currently that have been with me since the first year we opened, and that's unheard of in this industry, especially having gone through COVID and all that. So we're pretty proud of that. I think there's also a great opportunity that they're bringing their license in. I already have a purchaser for mine. We met with the city today. That'll be on the docket for the 18th, 19th, Cameron, when that is, and then it'll get hopefully passed on the same time that this comes in on August 2nd. That is going to be a really exciting new opportunity for the community. I can be honest when I say that we've never seen anything like that in Casper or probably the state. It's going to offer from simulators to a sports bar atmosphere. It's going to be portions of it or most of it are going to be all ages. They're going to have arcades for kids and things like that. And the location of that is the tennis club, 307 Tennis Club, which used to be formerly the Wyoming Athletic Club. So it's obviously on the east side as well, so it'll still be able to be an offering to this side of town, which we, you know, enjoy that as well. My brother isn't is lives on the east side of town, lives just off Blackmore, so we certainly want to make sure we're taking care of them. So the beauty of this is there are two opportunities coming out of this. Again, I'm sorry, I'm not the greatest speaker. I'm trying to gather my thought. I'm so nervous, this is killing me. He did touch on that we already were 21, we've always been 21 and over, and that's kind of been our little, I don't know, I don't know how you say it, like that's been kind of our differentiator in the community, and it's actually been something a lot of people have responded well to, especially the teachers and people like that that get off on Friday and kind of don't want to be around children. So this won't be a difficult transition in that it will remain 21 and over throughout the whole facility. I'll tell you, after visiting the Derby Club, I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to do so, it also made me feel a lot better, because we went and visited that prior to even making an agreement with them, because I kind of wanted to see how they ran it. I wanted to see what they did with their facilities, and I was more than impressed. It really was a high-scale, very clean, very nice facility, and that was kind of the selling point to us, being like, okay, I feel like we're in good hands with some local people. And after meeting Kyle and Bob Moberly, it really sealed the deal for us. I can also say, last but not least, you know, the timing of this is also very nice, because again, with rising food costs, it's ugly out there right now, and I'll tell you, it's only getting worse. So I guess I will answer any questions for you guys at this time that you might have of myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Any questions? None. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
With that, we've heard from the applicant, as this really isn't a public hearing, but if anybody else would like to make any comments on it, we'd be glad to take them. All right. There being none, at this point, the Chair entertain a motion to approve Resolution 23-22 approving 307 Horse Racing, Inc. to conduct paramutual wagering on live horse racing, historic horse racing, and simulcast events within Nitrone County, Wyoming at the Blackmore location known as the Kagan Cork.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would so move Resolution 23-22.
Okay.
I'd second.
Been moved by Commissioner Henry, seconded by Commissioner Mill. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just one, I guess friendly amendment. In the last paragraph of the resolution, it does omit this specific address, and so I would just recommend that I would add to the final clause the specific address, so that there's no doubt that it's not a blanket approval, but specific to the premises.
And I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
It does it does actually say whereas it's located at 5371 Blackmore on a resolution we're looking at.
Correct. It does in the second to last, but then in the last paragraph, it says it's hereby ordered that they're permitted in Nitrone County. So just to clarify, I think it's be consistent.
With friendly amendment, though. Would you be good with it?
I'm good with it.
All right. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Our next item is a consideration of execution of an affidavit. Do we will this Mr. Nelson, will this still be a affidavit or just a letter? If it's if it's just a letter, I don't know if we need to go down this path.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I think that's up to the pleasure of the commission. At the work session, we did discuss the affidavit. My understanding is it still would be one, but I guess I would look for direction from the commission on that.
At this point, Commissioner Nick Lason, he's kind of took the lead on this earlier, so what's your pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received just here, what, this morning, a 37 paragraph affidavit for consideration by the county dealing with the sale of the Marton Ranch to the BLM. There are a lot of issues involved with that, but based upon our level of comfort with where things stand right now, that simply a factual two paragraph plus the two introductory paragraph statement saying that Nitrone County was not formally consulted really will be sufficient at this time.
Okay. So at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I can so just to be specific in the record.
Could you could you just basically read what would it be in there?
So just to dovetail off of Commissioner Nick Lason's comments, this is in the matter that the state has filed with the Board of Land Appeals against the Bureau of Land Management regarding the acquisition of the Marton Ranch. I believe that the commission was comfortable in including in the requested affidavit, so the two introductory paragraphs, and then substantively two additional paragraphs. One would read, "The BLM did not formally seek any input from Nitrone County when the BLM acquired the Marton Ranch property." And then a separate paragraph, "The Nitrone County Board of Commissioners was not contacted during the scoping process for the Marton Ranch acquisition, and was not provided the opportunity to review or provide comment on any documents used to support the BLM's decision to acquire the Marton Ranch." And that would be the sum total of the affidavit.
At this point, does anybody have any objections to the affidavit as amended from the original? There isn't? Okay. At this point, then the Chair entertain a motion to consider the execution of the affidavit in the case of the state of Wyoming versus the Bureau of Land Management.
So move.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nick Lason, seconded by Commissioner North. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the county, Nitrone County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address when called upon. At this point, Ms. Nelson, may we have a staff report?
Hi. Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Megan Nellm, Senior Planner. And tonight, we have for you the update to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. For about the past eight months, the Development Department has been working with our consultant, Logan Simpson, to update the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. I'd say a considerable amount of time and effort was spent on the 2004 plan as well as this update, and the efforts of the past months, past few months, have really attempted to build on the work that was completed in 2004. We've updated data and charts that have been included in the new plan. However, the majority of the plan update has focused on reconfirming the direction and the goals and policies, and the future land use map within the plan. Some key changes that we made were updates to the future land use map with a smaller commercial area. We revised the future land use categories to make them tailored more to uses occurring on Casper Mountain, as well as making updates to the existing conditions and technical information. We really wanted this to be a community-based plan. We had two public meetings held over the course of the plan update to solicit comments and input from the citizens of the county. Meetings were held both in town and on the mountain to solicit ideas and present the plan drafts. We put citizen surveys out on the county's website and Facebook page and got over 50 responses. I'd say stakeholder input was key to the development of the updated plan, as the goal of staff and Logan Simpson was to strive for a citizen-based planning effort focused on what residents see for the future of Casper Mountain. The ultimate success of this plan depends on how well it's carried out, and while it's not officially adopted regulations, the plan is designed to be a guide to assist the county in accomplishing goals set forth in the plan, as well as in our 2016 Nitrone County Development Plan. Future amendments to our development regulations will work to ensure the regulations further the goals provided in the plan. And staff would like to thank all the citizens who put time and effort into the update. And this plan will serve as a guide for successful development on the mountain for the next five to 10 years. At the June 14th, 2022 meeting, the five to 10 years. At the June 14, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendments to the plan, and staff recommends that the board take action to adopt the amendments to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. And also, I have our consultant, Melissa Ruth, on Zoom and on the phone there, and she's going to give a short presentation about the plan update process and all the work that they assisted the county with. Are you there, Melissa?
I am.
Very good. I'll let Melissa present, and then I can answer any questions.
Thank you.
Great. Megan, do we have the slide up?
If you can share your screen, Melissa, then I think we'll be good to go.
I can do that.
Perfect.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all for this opportunity for that. I have kind of a quick presentation. I won't take too much time, but I wanted to give a little bit of background, an overview, and some information about the public outreach that we have done for this plan, and then a quick summary of the targeted changes to the plan, and then the next step. There are, well, there's one next step, so that one will be quick as well. Project overview, the initial reasons for updating the plan. This began with the Netron X zoning resolution update, where during the first phase, we did stakeholder interviews, and the feedback from those stakeholder interviews identified a need to update the MR1 and MR2 zone districts, specifically the standards, density, and allowed uses. And when we went back and looked at those MR1 and MR2 zone district standards against the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, which is the guiding document for those zone districts, the standards matched that plan. But what we heard when we brought that back, that information back to the public, was that the plan itself may not reflect the current conditions and the community values. So after discussions with staff, we identified a need to update the current future character for the area, especially the impact for septic and water systems. And so that was the focus of this update, with some targeted updates for the plan to address those kind of three key items. As Megan said, the project kicked off about eight months ago. We started in September with kickoff meetings with planning and zoning commission, and then a quick presentation to you all. We did a public open house and a questionnaire as well. And then our team in the backend was doing existing conditions review, and kind of a quick audit of the plan to see what those issues were, if there were any stringlining, or kind of easy pieces of the plan that we could update while the public was taking a look at the goals and policies specifically. And then from December through February, we really dove into drafting a plan, including an updated future land use map, goals and policies and implementation, and then did a second public open house and another questionnaire. March through June, that should say July because it is July, we did draft plan review meetings with the Planning Commission, and now here with you all, and then final plan development, and we are in the adoption hearing. So Phase One, quick overview of the public engagement. We did the Planning Commission meeting September 14 with six attendees, and then we did an additional listening session October 12 with 10 attendees. That listening session was unfortunately on a very snowy day, so we did a second, an open house up on the mountain at the Hogodon Ski Area, and that's where the picture is from. And we got 25 attendees, and then we had a questionnaire that was open from that open house through November 12, which received 45 responses. And then we also had a big ideas wall open through the end of November, and we received three comments, again tying back to the future character of the area. The goal of this phase of outreach was to review the goals and policies from the 2004 plan, and generally identify which policies needed to be refined. So this picture here is an example of the boards that we had up, where we listed the goals and policies as they currently stand, asked if they were needful refinement, or if they were generally okay. And what we heard, as Megan had mentioned, was that generally the goals and policies were in the right direction. There were some minor wording updates that we made, but we didn't make large changes to the goals and policies themselves. For Phase Two, we did our second open house in mid-February with an additional 25 attendees, and then we had the draft of the online plan open for public comments through March 7. We received 51 online comments from 11 individuals, and the goal of this outreach was to make sure that the edits that we had made to the plan and the updates, specifically the existing conditions and the future land use map, were what the public was expecting. And overwhelmingly, what we heard was yes, that that was what was expected. We made a couple additional edits to the future land use map, and shrunk that commercial area a little bit more, focused it really around Hogodon, and then revised the future land use categories. Phase Three began with the Planning Commission hearing in March, where we had five attendees, and the online plan revised version was up March 12 through June 13. It has 104 six-page reviews, and then 22 online comments from five individuals. I did just check that again about an hour ago, and we have not received any additional comments on the plan since that Planning Commission hearing on June 14. But we did have a total of 279 page views, and then we had six attendees at that Planning Commission hearing back in June. So targeted changes to the plan, as I've said and as Megan said, we really tried to target the edits that we made to the plan. So the red line that I believe Eric sent to you all shows that really the edits that were made were updating the future land use map, with again that smaller commercial area, and a little bit more descriptive narrative for the residential and the rural areas. We revised the future land use categories, and tailored them a little more to Casper Mountain land uses. We updated the existing conditions information, and then we reconfirmed the goals and policies to the community with minor changes. And I want to go through just a little bit of information about future land use versus zoning. So this is the 2004 proposed land use plan. This is what's currently in the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. And you can see that the, well, it might be a little hard to see. The majority of the mountain was designated as ranching, and then the front piece of the mountain as limited residential with full protection. Some of the items on this map are not things that you typically include in the land use plan. So the gravel pit, which is right here, is not usually something, something to that level of parcel detail is not usually something you include in the land use plan. Same with something like a fire break, and then telecommunications towers. So the first thing we did was pull those items off when we revised the plan. And what you'll notice here is this land use plan is general. They're kind of blobby, flowing lines, so they're not parcel-specific boundaries. Whereas the proposed zoning, which was based off of that 2004 future land use map, is a parcel-level designation. So these boundaries are hard boundaries, and this is the zoning that does come with a specific regulation. Future land use and land use plan does not come with regulations, so it doesn't go that deep. It identifies the general future character for the area. And each future land use category could encompass more than one zone district. So the proposed land use plan in the 2022 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan looks fairly similar. What we did is we shrunk this residential area up here and made it smaller, reflecting what's currently existing on the mountain. We added in the public lands and conservation easements, since those come with different land uses and restrictions upon them, and then identified the rural character of the county rather than using that full protection overlay. We also shrunk this partial area to focus right around Hogodon, and focusing a little bit on the areas where development could occur, recognizing that streets do exist up on the mountain, specifically in this area. What these land use categories mean, so the light green was the rural. The goal of that area is for grazing land and allowing for buildings and uses in support of ranching and low-density residential use. The recommended minimum lot size is 10 acres, but that piece comes more with the zoning descriptions itself. So this is a recommendation, not a requirement, in the future land use categories. Uses were generally very low-density residential accessory structures, home occupation, land agriculture, and mountain open space recreation. The residential category, which is that yellow through the center of the mountain, is residential development ranging in size from about a quarter acre to 10 acres. Those are the size of the lots currently on the mountain, again a recommendation, not a requirement, and a density of less than one unit per acre, or per five acres as terrain allows. We put in there clustering is encouraged, and it was something we heard a lot from the public, was desired with minimizing some of that footprint, maintaining that open space out in the mountain. But again, not a requirement. That is something that will be looked at with the zoning resolution, which you will be seeing in a couple months. Uses in the residential area, very limited commercial development. There's a couple commercial businesses out there currently, recreational vehicles, eating and drinking as adolescents, general stores, and then campgrounds as a conditional use. Resort commercial, which is the little red commercial area, limited to the vicinities of the Hogodon Ski Area and the existing state lease area. Uses are anticipated, restaurants, grocery stores, recreational support uses at Hogodon, including short-term rentals and lodging. And then the last two categories are your public and your open spaces. So public lands and conservation easements, these are lands currently under conservation easement or under federal management. No additional residential or commercial development is anticipated, but again, the conservation easement, excuse me, is what governs the development in those areas. Parks and Recreation is pretty self-explanatory. It's existing parks and active recreation land on the mountain, including the Ponderessa Park. And then, last but not least, next up, we are here at the Board of County Commissioners hearing. Following the adoption of this plan, we will update the MR1 and MR2 zone district standards. That Netron X zoning resolution rewrite is largely drafted. There are placeholders for the MR1 and MR2 zone district updates. We have developed kind of a sub-hearing committee to work with some of the mountain landowners and identify standards for those MR1 and MR2 zone districts. That meeting will occur later this month, I believe. And then you'll see the full draft of the zoning resolution. So that's the zone district standards itself is where you'll see specific use standards, so looking at how big some of those uses can be, setbacks, things like that are not detailed in this plan, because those are the regulatory components. So, you know, that was a lot of information in a short amount of time. Are there any questions?
Questions? Commissioner Nicolason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate staff's and our consultants' work. I think that there's been a lot of public engagement. That takes time, and there are always members of the public with differing opinions. A couple things that I note when looking through this red line, which I did find helpful, so I thank you. Page 45 was something that caught my attention. And it talks about, one of the additions is for planning implications on recognizing the importance of providing additional opportunities for easement, acquisition, and development, and that plans be in place to address those as opportunities come up. I think that's important. We're going to continue to see more and more members of the public using this great resource we have. And I, for one, hope that we get to not only improve what we have, but potentially expand through easements or other means our recreational opportunities up on the mountain. Page 50, same thing for recreation goals and policies, providing additional opportunities. I think that's important. And then, one question I had for staff or the consultant is on page 51. The, there was a change made. It used to be paragraph eight, now it's paragraph seven. The former, I think, goal was establish a county parks and a county parks board in order to monitor existing recreational facilities. Now it reads coordinate with the county advisory board for parks and recreation to monitor. In my mind, the verdict is still out on which direction we head, and whether a county parks board is appropriate for, to best serve the public and the county in future years. My preference, so I was hoping you could speak to that, and you know, my preference would be to have either or. So you could have coordinate with the county advisory board for parks and recreation, or and/or establish a county parks board. So I'll stop there. It looks like Ms. Nelms is ready to maybe address that specific question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, very good feedback, and thank you for your comments. I think that we can work with Logan Simpson to revise that language, maybe, just as you said, and/or Parks and Recreation Board, or possibly coordinate with, I lost it, sorry, the county entity for Parks and Recreation, or just some sort of language like that to be maybe more generic instead of specific to, or how we have the language in here. Would that be satisfactory?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, but I appreciate the willingness, and I think it's important to have some flexibility there, whether you go through, you know, general vague overarching statement that covers the bases, or whether you have both the old language and the new language. I'll just leave it at that, but thanks for looking at that with the consultant.
Yes, we'll definitely address that. And again, you know, the plan is meant to be a vision, so I like to keep it, you know, overarching, broad, you know, what we envision for the mountain and for the county, and then tailoring our rules to make sure, or our, you know, actions, forming boards, whatever the county ends up doing in the future that we work towards completing the goals that we outline in the plan. So we can definitely revise that language, I think, to get what you're saying and leave the intent there.
Any other questions? Commissioner Millen?
Good evening. I've got a question and a comment. Page 80, the future land use plan, land use map. We've got a lot of solid lines or straight lines, but these are, I'm not going to use the word, these are soft borders, correct?
Correct. We're going to smooth the borders. We won't blob them.
Okay, so my question kind of is, is there some language we can add in here to show future boards that this is not a hard and fast map?
Yes.
There's, in my book that I have right now, my current copy, I don't have anything indicating that. And how do we, as a pass board, talk to future boards that, say, somebody wants to do a five-acre development in what we show on this map as a rural area? How do we show that that could potentially be allowed?
And I apologize that we revised this late last week. Melissa, are you still there? Melissa, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
Awesome. But we did revise the Future Land Use Map and added this language. The Future Land Use Map determines appropriate location for future uses, particular land uses such as rural, residential, commercial, or industrial. It is essential to note that the Future Land Use Map is not a zoning map which legally regulates specific development requirements on individual pieces of land. Rather, the Future Land Use Map is a tool that is utilized when determining if a rezoning request is compatible with the district and neighborhood in which it is located. The Future Land Use Map does not establish zoning district boundaries or regulations, nor guarantee that individual properties are suitable for the full range of design characteristics described within each category. Land use decisions on individual properties should consider not only the Future Land Use Map, but also the Natrona County Development Plan Policies, the context of the surrounding area, and other individual site considerations that cannot be evaluated as part of the high-level policy guidance of the Future Land Use Map or the County Development Plan.
Phew, that was a mouthful.
It was. But we've added that in. I think just the planned copy that got put in your packets, your large packet, we neglected to change out their map.
Okay, so in your opinion, that should suffice to talk to those future boards that, you know, we're taking this into consideration?
I would hope so. You know, the descriptors that we used in that disclaimer at the bottom of the map hopefully will let future boards and the public know that, you know, this is not the zoning map. It's not parcel-specific. We're not going to zoom in on a specific parcel and say, oh, the Future Land Use Map says rural, or it says residential, so you're zoning. Don't even try. That's not the intent of the land use map. It's, you know, it's meant to be a guide so that anybody, you know, that wants to rezone or wants to do something different, they would apply, and we would take them through the process. And the Future Land Use Map and the plan is meant to be one piece of when we evaluate whether a rezoning is, you know, going to be positive or negative for an area.
Thank you. The other, it's more of a comment than anything. We received a comment reference our acknowledgements to potentially move, remove Commissioner Kaufman and include Commissioner Nicolason.
I think we-
I would like to leave both. She was instrumental in starting this, and so she needs some recognition.
I agree, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mill, and that was staff's recommendation as well. We'll list both commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. At this point, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update to approach the lecture. Good evening, Mr. Schneider.
Good evening. Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane. I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you all for listening to us throughout this process, adding an extra meeting when the snowstorm knocked a bunch of neighbors out. And thanks to the staff that you all have hired and brought on kind of in the middle of the stream of this process. I think, speak for myself, but perhaps some other neighbors, that things were not going in a great direction for public engagement and listening to the mountain community specifically. And I think your new team here has done a fantastic job of turning that ship around and building lasting relationships, so they should be commended, as should you all. And I was really hoping that we would stick the landing tonight and have no splash on our entry and get this thing passed, but it sounds like you all are going to wordsmith and tinker with a couple of things, and that's fine, I think, but I don't disagree with anything that was said, but just appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update? There being no others to speak in favor at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update to approach the lecture. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update, and now to declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Hendry?
You want me to?
The Chair entertain a motion to approve the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update with the couple of wordsmiths, non, what would you call those?
Mr. Chairman, so my notes would indicate that there was a change, adding a disclaimer to page 80 that Ms. Nelmes read, some language referring to the parks board being more general rather than referring to an advisory or statutory board, and revising the document to acknowledge both the contributions of Commissioner Nicolason and Commissioner Kaufman. Those are the three changes that I had.
I was going to suggest that the changes were non-structural in nature.
They're non-substantive.
Substantive, okay. What's one of those big words? All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mill? Did we get a motion?
Not yet. I'm trying to give it to you.
Okay, all right, sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update from the 2004 to this year's with those adjustment, non-structural-
I would second-
Structural, substantive-
Yeah.
Changes referenced.
Second by Commissioner Hendry. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hendry?
You know, I'd like to thank the staff and our consultants as well. I remember the first meeting I went to out there. Everybody was in the hall, and they thought we were going to take them clear off the mountain and zone them clear out, and we didn't have anybody here really talking for or against. And so that, I think you answered all the published questions, and they knew we weren't going to run over them and create laws, and so you did a good job, everybody did, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Mill?
Being involved in this process, it was long, had staff changes, different inputs from the public, and I want to say everybody worked really well together. I want to thank past and current staff on this product. It was long haul, it was only an update, but, boy, there was a lot of concern about it. I hope we met those concerns and addressed. Maybe not everybody's happy with everything, but I believe we have a really good product here, and I hope it serves the county well for future commissions.
Thank you. What else? All right, there being no other discussion, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of PS 21-005, the Waterman Major Subdivision. The hearing will be conducted according to state statutes, rules, and the Natrona County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address for the record at this point. Ms. Nelmes, may I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board, I have for you case number MS 21-005, the Waterman Major Subdivision, located in a portion of Section 34, Township 35 North, Range 81 West. And in summary, the applicant is proposing to subdivide 57.36 acres into five parcels, each approximately 10 acres in size. The current zoning is UA Urban Ag, and there's no change in zoning requested or required. The minimum lot size in Urban Ag is 10 acres. And on January 10th, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the major subdivision pending completion of all planning considerations. All those considerations have been met, and staff now recommends approval of the major subdivision request. And I can answer any questions, and the applicant in the audience.
I have one quick question. Did 33 Mile actually agree to providing water to these lots?
They did agree to provide water and submitted all the required information to DEQ for this subdivision's Chapter 23, and they did receive a non-adverse from DEQ.
Okay, thank you. If there are no questions for Ms. Nelmes, at this point, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of PS 21-005 to approach the lecture. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Don Hollingsworth. I reside at 6169 Garden Creek, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Hollingsworth? I think you're going to get off easy tonight. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of PS 21-005? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There being no others to speak in favor at this point, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to PS 21-005 to approach the lecture. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against PS 21-005, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair entertain a motion to approve PS 21-005, the Waterman Major Subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, I would move PS 21-005 along with all the findings of fact.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd second that motion.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hendry, seconded by Commissioner North to approve PS 21-005 along with all findings of fact. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Change the page here real quick. Now declare the public hearing open for consideration of CUP 20-002, the Dynasolar Extension Request. The hearing will be conducted according to state statutes, rules of the Natrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lecture and state your name and address for the record at this point. Ms. Nelmes, may I have a staff report?
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, Board. This is Conditional Use Permit 20-002, the Dynasolar Solar Installation, located in portions of Section 7 and 18 of Township 34 North, Range 79 West, and portions of Township 34 North, Range 80 West. The applicant is requesting an extension of the construction commencement timeline set forth in the Conditional Use Permit that was approved via Resolution 2920 on June 2nd, 2020. The current Conditional Use Permit requires commencement of construction of the project by December of 2022, and Dynasolar has requested an extension to December of 2026. All their findings and conditions of the original permit would remain unchanged. The land is currently zoned UA Urban Ag and is vacant grasslands. At their June 14th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the amendment to the Conditional Use Permit 20-002, which would extend the date of construction commencement to December 2026, and staff also recommends approval of the CUP amendment request. And I can answer any questions, and I know the Dynasolar representatives are in the audience.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Nelmes? All right, thank you. At this point, I would ask the applicant's representative, Mr. Masterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is John Masterson. My address is 159 North Walcott, Suite 220 here in Casper. I represent the developer here, Enyo, and specifically the best-named project ever, Dynasolar. You're used to seeing Christine Michael here as the primary representative of the developer. She is unable to be here today due to a medical emergency in her family. Her priorities, of course, are exactly correct, but that leaves me here to present these two CUP applications. The next one you will hear relates to Dynasolar as well, and they kind of dovetail together, so please forgive me if I slop over into the other one. And as staff indicated, you've already approved the Conditional Use Permit for the Dynasolar project. We are not asking for changes to the size of the panels, electrical output, the size of the leased land, anything like that. We're asking for two changes, the extension and the battery electric storage system you'll hear about in a moment. You can see from the packages that Dynasolar has met all the administrative requirements for approval of both. Planning and zoning has unanimously recommended approval to you of both CUPs. As far as the extension request, I don't want to tell you what you already know. I don't want to repeat for you things that you have already heard. I want to make efficient use of your time, but without Ms. Michael being here, I am afraid I might miss something. So I'd ask you, beg you, to ask any questions that you have, because I'm going to introduce to you the people who are here on behalf of this project, consultants and the individuals who involved, who have come here to answer any questions that you may have. So Mikhail Levy, stand up, is Ms. Michael's partner. Spencer Martin is with Martin and Nicholson Environmental Consultants in Park City. He put together the application that's been reviewed. Thank you, Spencer. Evelyn Carpenter and Jade Gaster are here from Solus Energy Consulting out of Fort Collins. They're going to focus on the best system, but since I'm introducing people, I thought I'd do it at this point. And last but not least, Shane Porter, someone who's familiar to you with WLC, who participated in the preparation of the application and can speak to anything as far as engineering or moving the dirt. Ron Dutton, our socioeconomic expert, was to call in. I'm not sure if he did, but nonetheless, he can be available should you want to speak with him. So as to the extension request, when we appeared before you in 2020, Rocky Mountain Power had completed its usual long-term review of electricity needs, and it wanted 300 to 400 megawatts of solar power to come from Wyoming. We sought the original permit so we could respond to that RFP and receive favorable consideration from Rocky Mountain Power. We were stunned when Rocky Mountain Power did not accept any solar from Wyoming, contrary to what was anticipated in the RFP. In February, on February 14th of 2023, this coming year, RMP is going to issue another RFP for long-term needs. We expect that the solar projects that will be on that list will come with a storage component. We want this project to move forward, and we're asking for an extension of the timeframe for the permit you have already issued so that we can submit a viable and permitted project to Rocky Mountain Power. If we have a permit in hand, it makes this project infinitely more appealing to Rocky Mountain Power. We have four signed interconnections in hand, we have a known timeframe, and we qualify for the project as Rocky Mountain Power anticipates it to be, and as you will decide based on our applications. The second complication and the reason for the extension request is supply chain problems that we're all familiar with. This has led to a great deal of delay in being able to get solar panels, being able to participate in construction of those facilities. Ms. Carpenter can also speak to that, should you have questions about that and exactly the issues that that has created. The project- The project remains positive as far as economic diversification. We've properly and timely filed compliance with all of the county's regulations, requirements. There's a significant long-term economic benefit to the county. We project that over the 35 years of the project, it will contribute about $65 million in tax revenue to the county. That is what I have, Mr. Chair, to try to tee things up, and as I indicated, we are happy to take any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. The question, Mr. Masterson at this point. Commissioner Nicolason.
Good evening, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. The initial CUP term, I think, was two and a half years, plus or minus, and this one is now sought to be four and a half approximately, and I think it's useful, your comment that we've got both supply chain issues and issues with Rocky Mountain Power and that whole process. So I assume those are the reasons for seeking four and a half rather than two more, for example.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, that's correct, but we all know we're going to, we try to build in a little bit of extra time. If it could be done before that time, you know, we all hope it could be done before that. So it is, those are the two reasons for it, but we think a good-faithed time to have it built would be by December of 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of CUP 20-002 to approach the lectern. Anyone else? No? Commissioner, Mr. Snyder.
Good evening, Commissioners. I just wanted to voice, add my voice in favor of this. I just did the quick math. It sounds like about $3 million a year to the county, and you know, we talk, we're talking about one cent tax coming up again and the needs of the community, the funding gaps of the community, and I'm sure you all can figure out in a minute where $3 million would fit into the budget. So not only do I hope that you'll approve this without any issue tonight, but I encourage you all as Commissioners to get involved. You have a voice with the utility. You have a voice with the Public Utilities Commission in the state, and we should go after getting these revenues into our county to make our tax picture whole, to diversify our revenues, and to strengthen our county for the future. So I encourage you all to look for opportunities to get customers for this power, and I think you'll see this thing get built really fast before the end of that CUP, once we have a customer for the power. So again, just in support of our county, could use your all's help in support of this project.
All right, thank you. Any questions? No? All right, thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There being no others to speak in favor at this time, I'd ask those who wish, those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to CUP 20-002 to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against CUP 20-002, the DynaSolar Extension Request, I now declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hendry.
I would move CUP 20-002, the DynaSolar Extension Request. We don't have many findings of fact in this one, so I would move its approval.
Okay. Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Hendry, seconded by Commissioner Milmes. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hendry.
You know, I think I said when it first started is Rocky Mountain Power in a few years is talking about closing down Dave Johnson, and hopefully this will go through, and we'll be on the upper end of the power grid for Casper. And if this thing puts out power, we may need it in Casper. All we can get. Anyway, I think it's a good project, and the county will benefit as well as about three landowners out there, so it's a good project.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicolason.
You know, I echo some of Commissioner Hendry's comments. I think this is precisely the type of economic development and diversification we need in the county, and I'm excited about the project.
Thank you. Commissioner Milmes? Commissioner North? Commissioner North?
We do appreciate the request for an extension because the county's going through a lot of stuff right now where we're having to wait for, as a result of supply chain issues, so we understand that completely, and that is truly an issue out there right now. And hopefully it'll get better, and hopefully it'll be sooner instead of later than it does. So I do think that this will be a good addition to the county once it gets completed to supply the, a good electrical source that we have, you know, that we need, because we don't always have wind, but most of the time we do have sun, at least, at least during the summer months anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milmes.
I'd like to kind of key off of what Commissioner Hendry said. I read a report here a few months ago that was talking about how even communities like ours could potentially expect brownouts in the coming future with the reduction of coal plants. Hopefully, they don't just send the power downstream and we don't get any. The other thing that I'd like to mention is hopefully the state, while giving sanction to a monopoly in utilities, they'll take a look at those and require them to potentially take third-party power, gas, whatever it is. They shouldn't be holding those back just because they're the only game in town. So hopefully they can address that in the future shortly.
All right. Any further comments? All right, it's been moved, seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of 22.02 CUP Dyna, DynaSolar Battery Storage System. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Nautrona County Commission and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the commission to approach the lectern and state your name for the record. At this point, Ms. Milmes, may I have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board, last case tonight, 22.02 CUP, the DynaSolar Battery Energy Storage System Conditional Use Permit. And to summarize, the applicant is requesting a CUP for the installation of a 440-megawatt battery energy storage system. The system will be located on a 25-acre parcel contained within the area of the DynaSolar Solar Utility Installation, which received a conditional use permit approved via Resolution 2920 on June 2nd of 2020. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit, and staff also recommends of the conditional use, approval of the conditional use permit request. Staff recommends only three permit conditions. The applicant obtained all required construction permits for each phase of construction of the system prior to commencement. They need to work with YDOT and County Road and Bridge on appropriate access permits and road improvements or repair agreements. Road improvements shall be to county road standards and maintained throughout the life of the project, and construction shall be completed by November 30th, 2026 of the battery system. Any extension of the time period would require an amended CUP. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Okay, Mr. Masterson.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is an addition and an enhancement to the DynaSolar project. Rocky Mountain Power is now requiring storage along with the generation of solar power. The addition of storage makes it more attractive economically and for reasons that I'm going to ask Ms. Carpenter to explain to you in the PowerPoint she has. It's about three and a half hours when you include the animated presentations. It's very succinct, but we think it's important for Ms. Carpenter to come here and explain to you exactly what a battery electric storage system is. I'd make a few notes before asking her to come up. First, the, this system is within the lands that you have permitted this facility for. It occupies approximately 25 acres of the 3,000-plus acres we have leased. The solar project is not 3,000 acres, but that's the size of the acreage that we have leased. Based on our studies, there is no impact, no negative impact on any of the factors that you are to consider in evaluating this project, and I'd note that to a casual observer, these units would, if they're noticed at all, they would be nondescript. The BES has a projected life of 35 years as well, the same life as the solar farm itself. The financial benefit, we calculate over that 35 years to be $83.6 million in tax revenue. So there's no overburdening of county resources. We feel we've taken adequate public safety measures. Environmental impacts are minimal, if they exist. No additional traffic concerns, and it will not alter the character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. As far as the recommendation of staff, I want to make sure to thank them for their work before I sit down, not because they have recommended approval of the project, but their work is, they are diligent, they are happy to point out areas where our application may be missing materials, and they have been very fair in their treatment of us. The three conditions that the staff has recommended, we embrace those. We have no problems with those being part of the permit conditions. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask Ms. Carpenter to come up, and she can give you an explanation of those systems.
Great, thank you.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I'm going to talk through and show you what a best system is, talk about some of the health and safety issues that may be on your mind, and also talk about the reason for this from a market perspective. If you could go to the first slide.
I'm getting the, you have to give me your name and.
I'm sorry. Evelyn Carpenter, 430 North College Avenue, Fort Collins, Colorado.
Thank you.
Sorry. Oh, sure. Sure, just to give you some background on who I am. So I'm a licensed civil engineer with a bachelor's and a master's in civil engineering, and I have an MBA, and I started a renewable energy consulting company 13 years ago in Colorado, but we work all over the US, and we've recently just completed a couple of very large battery energy storage projects where we project and construction manage them. So I'm speaking from kind of that experience and showing you some photos from some of those projects. Next slide, please. So the question which Mr. Masterson has already addressed is why add storage? There's a couple of different reasons. First and foremost, it's making the project more attractive to Rocky Mountain Power and greatly increases the chance of the project being selected. The majority of the projects now under development in the United States for solar that are large projects do have energy storage components to them. This does provide grid resiliency, and so it helps when there are brownouts and blackouts in power. That really helps to stabilize the grid. And another purpose of this is that what it's going to do is take the solar energy that's generated during the day, store it, and move it to the later hours when you see demand in the evening when people go home and turn on their air conditioners and lights and things like that. So this is actually shifting solar load from the day to the afternoon and evening and stores excess energy. Next slide, please. So the graphs that you see there are looking from 2019 to projected 2025 solar installations. So the one on the far left is the percentage of solar projects with, energy storage is the dark blue, the light blue is just solar projects. You can see the dark blue is increasing, and basically what that's representing is the percentage of projects that are being installed in the US now with energy storage, and that's projected to increase and increase as we go forward in time. So this is just showing you why there has been a change since the original application for the DynaSolar project. Next slide. So the most prevalent technology being installed right now for battery energy storage is lithium-ion batteries. There's a number of reasons for that from an economic and market perspective. It can maximize the number of charge and discharge cycles. Typically, it's one cycle per day. You charge up the batteries during the day, discharge at night. They're a lot lighter and more efficient than some of the other technologies out there, and there's a real limited need for maintenance. These batteries are very similar to your cell phone battery, not to your car battery. So unlike a lead-acid battery, they don't have those same kind of components. Again, it's an enclosed system like your, you know, laptop or cell phone battery. Next slide, please. How the system works, so the, these common enclosures, and they're not occupied structures, they basically have external doors, and batteries are stored in these enclosures. They look a little bit like shipping containers, and I'll show you some photographs of some different types of enclosures. They're basically converting AC power to DC power. It's stored in DC power if you care about or know about that stuff. And basically, the project can be configured so that the batteries will charge either from the solar array, or it can actually also charge from the grid. So that's an engineering decision that's made during that design process, but it can charge either way and then discharge to the grid. And then each of these enclosures has a separate HVAC system, so it provides heating and cooling. You need to keep the batteries within a specific temperature range. So next slide, please. So these are some examples of what it looks like. A couple items of note in the picture on the right, you can see HVAC units, you know, to the back of the, the enclosures, the little things back there. The picture on the left, the thing on the left is the battery energy storage facility cabinet, and then the one on the right is the power conversion system. So each one of these is its own box with a smaller box that is the power conversion system for the AC to DC conversion. Next slide, please. So when you open up a cabinet and you look at what's inside, if you look at the picture on the right, those are all individual batteries. They're placed in racks. Each one of the batteries has its own control system, temperature control system. Each of the control systems from the individual batteries is hooked up to additional control systems and monitored. So it's a very sophisticated monitoring system where we're getting individual charge and discharge information, temperature information, et cetera, about each individual battery cell, and those are all racked and then put inside the enclosure. So that's what it looks like inside the enclosure. Each one of these has a very sophisticated fire monitoring system, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We did meet with Fire Marshal Gackey about two weeks ago and explained to him the entire system, walked him through all of the fire protection components of the systems, answered all of his questions, and he was quite comfortable with our approach. So basically, what we're showing you here is a central monitoring panel that would be on the exterior of the facility. So all of the best enclosures line up and they will alarm to the system. And so this is something that the fire department would come to open up, figure out if there was an alarm going on, and be able to know where to respond. If you go to the next slide, please. So some of the safety protections that are enclosed in these batteries, so each of the enclosures itself has a remote monitoring system. A facility of this size is mandated by NERC to have a 24/7 operations center. So there will always be somebody who is looking at all of the alarming on the system, and this includes the solar as well, but somebody will be monitoring 24/7, any kind of heat, any kind of issues. They'll be monitoring charging and discharging, so there's always somebody watching the facility. Each of the individual enclosures has what's called a thermal runaway mitigation system. So those systems are in each individual enclosure. They can be either water-based or gaseous-based. But what happens if there is a thermal event is that that particular system targets each individual cell that I showed you, each individual battery within the enclosure. And then that will put it out, put the fire out. Well, it actually doesn't have fire, but it's, it'll melt. And each of the enclosures has its own disconnect switch, and so you can isolate each enclosure, which is something that the Fire Marshal was interested in knowing about. Each of the enclosures have their own gas detection system. They have a venting system. So it's a pretty sophisticated, you know, public safety. Did I lose that? There it is. It's a pretty sophisticated public safety protection system that's put in place. Did I lose this? Yeah, sorry. And so anyways, there was two different systems, which I mentioned. There's a water-based system and a chemical-based system for thermal runaway, and there is benefits to each one. We haven't designed yet what the system's going to be, and so either one of those are the kind of standard systems that are in the marketplace right now. And then lastly, folks may have questions about kind of what happens at the end of the project and refurbishment and second life. And so there are various different uses right now for batteries that have been, you know, charged and discharged and are now kind of not able to be used for these types of applications. There are reconditioning, people are reconditioning these batteries and using them in EVs. They are being recycled by manufacturers. And there's a second life market now starting to emerge for, like emergencies, you know, situations where somebody needs just an emergency battery for a backup generator. So batteries are also being used in those kinds of applications. And I think that's the end of the formal presentation. Yeah, and so I had some slides relating to the other application if we needed them, but we don't, so. So any open for questions?
Any questions for Ms. Carpenter? All right, done. All right. Commissioner Milne.
So I attended the first plan of zoning, and there's a couple of questions I asked or had the HVAC systems that you have on these units. Are they basically self, how are they powered? Are they self-sustaining through the solar or how are you getting that?
They're powered from the B E S enclosure itself.
Okay. Another question was the batteries themselves, the chemical, if they leak or broken or anything like that. If water-based system's used or anything, do you have, are these units or are the containments on like a secondary containment so that that material can easily be captured? Or what's your plans for that?
So typically, what, so if it was a water-based system and there is a chemical-based system, but for a water-based system, typically you need to get the water out of the enclosure because it does not work well with electronics, right? And so you actually have drains, and so, you know, you would drain that to drain to ground. We're not doing secondary containment as industry standard. What happens with these things is you're actually off-gassing, so it's more of a gas problem, not a water problem. And so, you know, we vent, we vent the gas from, you know, if there's a thermal event.
So that kind of leads me into the next question that I have is, if there is an incident on it, whether during installation or long-term, I assume that you're either have developed or are going to develop in process your ERP. Are you going to give that to the Fire Marshal and then emergency management and all that?
Yeah, so the projects that we just built in California, we had several meetings with the fire department. They were in on the, in on our ERP. They provided comments and feedback. We provided extensive training to the fire department, both during construction so that they knew where everything was, and then upon commercial operation, and they came through and approved all of the installations. So we work very closely with the fire department, which is why we've already reached out to them to talk to them about the system and get their initial thoughts on what they might want to see for the system. And so he did ask, you know, multiple questions. He wanted to know about alarming, if it alarms directly to him, how that works. And so when we talked about kind of that 24-hour monitoring system, we can call out the fire department, but we can also clear alarms if we have false alarms. And so, you know, there's a, there's this procedure and system in place that's monitored 24/7 for these.
Okay, and then also with the gassing off and the potential for possible explosion, do those batteries, are they going to date a C chain explosion? Or is, how is that designed to just isolate that one building? Or isolate just the one battery? Or how are you going to try to mitigate that?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different systems built in here. So at the very individual battery level, we have this thermal runaway management system that actually will deluge that individual battery, and it protects the other adjacent battery. So it prevents that one cell, if something were to happen, from propagating to additional cells. That's within an enclosure. Each of the enclosures also has, is set back for safety reasons from each other, right? So the chances of it propagating from one enclosure, if there is a problem, to the second one, there's already a fire separation distance there. And so, what was this? There was another question in there that I didn't answer. There was a.
No, you pretty much got it. No, just, just.
Oh.
How are you controlling the explosions that may occur?
Yeah, so the, the potential for explosion happens if the, something has happened and there's gas contained within the enclosure, and it hasn't been vented yet, and somebody opens a door. And so the procedure for managing these, and actually this is standard procedure across the industry, is if there is a thermal event, the fire department leaves it alone, protects the area, protects personnel from, you know, entering the area, and it needs to outgas. And so you basically let it burn. You let it go. And that's standard industry procedure, and it's unfortunate. These things are extremely expensive, but that is how we respond to it until it's outgassed, until the fire's out. And so that's really the procedure is to, is to protect the area and keep people away from it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Henry.
Yeah, thanks for coming. And it's, we've always talked about battery technology and developing that in many different instances. So you talk about the vapor, if something happened. Usually parts per million, that vapor is, if it goes out in the atmosphere, you've got bar none that is fairly close. So how would it dissipate? I mean, it's going to dissipate, and it's going to be so many parts per million if it goes a mile or if it goes a half mile. So there, is there some safety factors built into that, where that location is?
Yeah, so I can't answer that question because I don't know what kind of the parts per million dissipation are. It's going to depend on, you know, how many of the cells have a problem and things like that. So the system is designed so that you're going to have one cell that has a problem. And so you're talking about, when I showed this slide, there is, you know, there would literally be one cell. And so in terms of how much outgassing that one cell would have, I can't answer that question because I don't know. We do venting, and so venting is in all of the different enclosures. And so it will, you know, vent to atmosphere in small amounts. But, you know, I can't speak to what kind of concentrations it would be because I just don't know. That's something that we could come back with more information, if that would be helpful.
I was curious.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry? We could put that in the ERP, yeah.
Right along with that, what are the gases, the off-gases that are produced?
So it's hydrogen gases and hydrocarbons that will be produced in off-gassing.
Okay, what kind of hydrocarbons?
I don't know that either. That's just what the, what the data says, yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the hydrogen will dissipate very quickly.
Yeah.
But the hydrocarbons, it depends on what they are.
Yeah.
Commissioner Henry.
Just a, I guess a question observation. This is going to have to go through industrial siding, this project. And so the batteries would probably be part of that. All those questions would be answered during that as well, I would suppose. Is that right?
I would defer to Mr. Matherson.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Henry, I do believe that to be the case.
Okay.
And the DEQ would also have a voice in the ISC process.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Carpenter? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Masterson, do you have anybody else you'd like to, of the applicant that would like to speak before we open it up for public comment?
I don't have anyone further to call unless the commission has questions of any particular individual.
All right, thank you. At this point, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of 22-02 CUP to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wish to speak in favor? All right. There being no one to speak in favor, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to 22.02 CUP to approach the lectern. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against CUP 22.02, now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to approve 22.02 CUP, the Dino solar battery storage system.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Move by Commissioner Henry. Second by Commissioner Milne. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henry.
I guess I said this a minute ago, but I think this battery, battery storage component is a great thing, and it'll work on an industrial level, I think, at some point in time for not only solar, but wind as well. If we, if Rocky Mountain Power pulls out Dave Johnson, we're going to need some batteries. And I would hope that universities and, including our land-grant institution would help work on technology. And so this is kind of a start, the first time we've heard about it. So I think it's great.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Milne.
Chairman, I'd agree with Commissioner Henry's comments there. This is a great boon to the landowner as well, seeing this project come in. It's a win for the community as well as that private property owner or owners. So I'd be completely in favor of this.
All right. Commissioner North.
I appreciate you working with the county fire department and making sure that everything is copacetic there. That alleviated a lot of my concerns as far as whether you had reached out to them and what the response time and everything else would be because that is something that is always a potential. And training and education is a big part of the fire departments and knowing what they're getting into before they ever get there. So I appreciate that.
All right. Anyone else? Well, I would just add, I like the project a lot more with the battery storage. As we went through the wind turbines, most people know what I think of green energy and all this stuff, but I appreciate all the hard work that you put into these projects. I would really do hope that we start, this one goes through this time. I think it's, it's location and if we get some changes on where we can actually independently sell power to end users and not have to deal directly with Rocky Mountain Power, I think this project in particular will be a huge boon to the Toronto County area. So with that, if there are no further questions or comments, those in favor of the motion, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right. At this point, we're at the end of our regular meeting. We would accept public comments if anybody wishes to address the commission. Okay.
Good evening, Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane. Sorry to do this to you, but I've been waiting since 2:30 this afternoon to share this. There's some concern up on the mountain about shutting down Casper Mountain Road next year, and the understanding is, which is great, that you've got a federal grant to shut the road down and get it repaved and surfaced and so on. But folks like myself who live past that construction are wondering what our commute is going to look like next summer, and so far there haven't been any answers. So it sounds like the horse got out of the barn on approving something with that that wasn't really fully thought through. And as the conversation is rolling, I think you all just want to know that those conversations are happening and folks are kind of becoming concerned about what that's going to be. So the sooner we can get an answer, the sooner we can put our minds to rest and not make it a bigger problem than it needs to be. And just relative to that, there's one other concern which is coming up, and I think it's going to continue to come up in the zoning process in front of you, which is how you're contacting and communicating with residents. I think it's fantastic you have a steering committee kind of working on that. But I really want to think about the mail to the residents and landowners on the land use plan. I think that was deficient at the beginning of that, and I don't know what's been done to fix it. But I think it would bear you all looking into that and giving staff direction to get better mailing lists. I never got a single piece of mail about Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, and I live in the plan area, so whatever list you had, it didn't include us. Folks are also pretty concerned that FireWise is gone, and we haven't heard in several months what's going to go on in terms of either a cost share program coming back, how you get your building permits without having a defensible space approved. And, you know, in tandem with that, this is covered in the land use plan, but the landowner field day is gone as well. And so there's an opportunity for you all to build in a monthly or a quarterly meeting for landowners up there so that we're aware when you all need our public input, and it's not so difficult to get it from us. So sorry to keep you even later on a long day, but just wanted to let you all know some of the conversations residents up on the mountain are having.
All right, thank you. We've, your very first point is well-taken. We've, we're dealing with the, I guess it's the Bureau of Rec who's doing Cortez Road. Until they bid it and get a contractor and, yeah, it's, Cortez is working, and it's, it's going to be a challenge, especially on the mountain. You know, Cortez has got a loop there that you can get around and go back around. And Mike Hagler is very aware of the challenges it's going to create. So I think this particular case, he was probably going to get involved a lot sooner with the bidding process because I think it's going to have to take some forethought on how you're going to move people through there, and that's going to have, it's going to have an impact on the cost. So.
Thank you. It's a great relief to know you all are looking at that.
Commissioner Milne.
So when it does happen, just like a lot of people found out this weekend, it sounds like, out of Cortez Road, don't go past those closed road signs. It's $550, $575 fine. There was quite a few people that were running the signs, so don't do that. But we'll try to, you know, do what we can to accommodate you all up there, obviously, with you being residents and to be able to access your property and everything. The other point, as far as the notifications for the zoning, we've already discussed quite a bit about actually sending out mailers like we did the initial kickoff of the zoning, however long ago that was. We're going to do the same process again to make sure that all residents, landowners of the county have a notification of it so that we're going above and beyond the online or whatever notifications or the newspaper, but we're going to be sending that out to everybody.
Appreciate that. The tax assessment finds me, so I know you've got my address.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else at this point. Commissioners, Commissioner Nicolason.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Commissioner Henry.
I haven't got anything tonight.
Commissioner North.
I was proud of our Supreme Court. They limited the EPA in a major way, which I hope will help us maintain our power plants in the state of Wyoming and continue to use coal. And so far, I've been pretty pleased with a lot of the decisions they've come up with. There's a few that I have questions about, but it's nice to see that that we do have some judges that are, that are willing to actually read the Constitution and figure out what's in there and what's not.
Right, thank you. Commissioner Milne.
Yeah, thank you. First, I'd like First, I'd like to sincerely thank the CNFR and the Central Fair and Rodeo Board for their consideration and thoughts concerning one of their past members that died, my aunt. They managed her at the CNFR and Fair did a little thing for her, so I do want to publicly say thank you very much. Family really does appreciate it. Pass that all. Be brief.
All right, thank you.
Well, I tend to try not to say much at these, but there was an article, an editorial that was written that by candidate Dallas Laird that reads more like an unpaid political ad in the editorial section of the Casper Star Tribune this past weekend regarding the hospital, sale of the hospital. It's very short on facts, fact, very few facts in it, and long on trying to make people very emotionally attached to what he's trying to sell. So the very last thing that he says in here is, were the county commissioners acting in the best interest of the people when they sold our hospital? One needs to first understand that the hospital has two components, was the operations part and the hard assets. The operations is run by an independent board. The county owned the bedpans through the walls. We own the hard assets. Management of the hospital was under probably some of the finest people in our community and some of the smartest. They went through a significant planning and they determined that the medical center could no longer stand on its own. It needed to be affiliated or absorbed or there was 50 different models that they could use. They came to the conclusion after some very long-term looking at it, that this was in the best interest to sell the operations of the hospital. They then came to us and said, do you want to lease the building or lease the operations to this entity, or do you want to sell? The hospital's decaying. We're the, we're the landlord. We were going to get hit with having to do lots and lots of work to maintain this. The, the days and days that the commissioners spent evaluating this in conjunction with our partners, the Medical Center Board of Trustees, in coming up with what was the best thing to do, they bid the building. They bid the operations out. In the course of this, we had some of the best legal minds that dealt with on what is good practice for selling a hospital and hospital assets. We looked to them. We brought an expert in for us, the Medical Center brought one in for them, and Banner had their own. The notion that we sold the hospital for less than value is factually wrong. We had a market analysis and a fair market analysis, and they all indicated that the dollars that the county was getting was equal or greater than what was being offered. Was the operations, is the operations better, better under Banner? That remains to be seen. But what we do know is during the pandemic, having Banner there was a boon to us because they could bring in outside staff that we could not. They continue to be able to recruit doctors and very talented ex, the medical expertise that we were seeing go away from us because we sit 200 and some miles from any major medical center. That was one of the things that in the scoping that the Board of Trustees came through and decided that we can't, we can't survive. We're going to lose things. We may lose our OB, we may lose our cardiologist. We were, we were slowly dying. And was this in the best interest? What we have in place with Banner through the foundation and what the county has in place by agreement protects what we had and anticipates growth. That is more than what we could have focused on being a standalone. Medical equipment is outrageous. Having Banner that has the ability to buy more than one drives the price down. There were so many factors in, in coming to the conclusion that this was in the best interest, but to suggest that we sold it cheap, that it wasn't in the best interest or it wasn't thought through is a real insult to all the people that participated in this. And that, that includes the Commission, the Board of Trustees, the, the attorneys of which we got to know quite well because we spent many a day with them. So in short, I'd just like to say, I, I will answer Mr. Laird's question, was it in the best interest? At this point, it surely looks like it. So with that, I'm done pontificating.